Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and liberty for all.
Once again, good evening, everybody. Happy Cinco de Mayo. Um, welcome to the village board meeting in Granville, New York. Our first item of business on the agenda tonight is to ratify the meeting minutes of four seven. I need a motion to ratify the meeting minutes. Heather makes the motion.
I'll second it.
And Paul seconds. All in favor? Aye. Moving along to our monthly reports. I have a report here from Judge Roger Ferrando. Uh, check for the amount of one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars was sent to the chief fiscal officer of the village of Granville on Monday, May fifth, two thousand twenty five, and it's signed by Justice Roger Ferrando. He has here written down to also fourteen cases closed. Eight cases, uh, others were written for court. Um, moving along to our code enforcement officer report uh, submitted by our code enforcement officer, Mr. Curtis Padone. He has one verbal warning that was issued for that were written warnings. One has been referred to the village court. Two building permits have been applied for and two others have been referred to code enforcement. I have our Granville Police Department issued by Chief Ernie Bassett. Total incidents for the year is one hundred and forty three. Total incidents year to date, four hundred and eighty eight. Total investigations year to date is at seventy. I have our Granville Fire Department report issued by Chief Michael Zinn. Structure fires in at two, motor vehicle crashes at one, fire alarms at one, grass and brush fires at one EMS assist at four, and standby is at one. So total alarms for the month of April is at ten. Total, total calls year to date is sixty seven. Our local water report by Mr. Scott Mackey, water Tesla sample was taken at seventy five Quaker Street. One at eighty nine North Street and one at forty eight East Potter. All samples came back good. The village of water, Granville, in the water in Village of Granville is safe to drink. I need a motion to accept the reports as read. Dean makes the mo- or Denise makes the motion. Dean seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, moving along to our appropriations in the general fund. Forty three thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars and sixty seven cents. The sewer fund, twenty one thousand, three hundred and seventy four dollars and one cent. Water fund, ten thousand, seven hundred, seventy eight dollars and forty nine cents. Senior shuttle came in at one thousand, five hundred, fifty dollars and sixty two cents. On audited vouchers came in at three thousand, two hundred, seventy seven dollars and thirty eight cents for a total of eighty thousand, six hundred, fifteen dollars and seventeen cents. I need a motion to pay the bills.
That motion.
Dean makes the motion and Heather seconds. All in favor? Aye. And we have a few budget transfers to go through. I'm going to hand this over to our budget officer. Mr. Rick Roberts, would you mind going through these, please?
Any use of the budget transfer that will be afforded the end of the year. For the court, we have contractual expense running by seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's recommending now we transfer that from personal service for the court. We have enough money to do that. Um, contractual expense for the police transferring, seeking to transfer eleven thousand, two eighty one ten. That's seems probably like a strange dollar now that they're like the amount they've expended off of the grant. So we're simply taking the grant funds, increasing the budget and transferring it over to pay for the very good reveals and things the police purpose. Perfect service for the crossing guard, um, old run by a toll of about one thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. Reason for that, you recall, the deal was struck with the school over the summer after the budget was passed. We're going to have just one crossing guard and then the school agreed to pay for a second guard. So we're just simply showing the revenue from Grand Central School and transferring it over so we can continue to pay the second crossing guard. The other three, uh, item line items that are overdrawn are common ones. Contractual expense for the municipal center just really power and utility costs are driving that. Street lighting, similarly, the increased power cost. And health insurance premiums, uh, forty three hundred dollars. Probably sounds like a laugh, but the health insurance line I think is like two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the general fund. So we were almost percent cap on that. To cover those, I recommend the moving of eleven thousand, fifty dollars from on the DPW's contract expense. Scott always does a good job. Doesn't get more soft than he needs and he has the money to transfer over, cover those. As we've seen with the water fund again, overrunning the power pumping thirty five hundred and twenty five dollars. This should be the last one for that one. Uh, purification, we overran by two hundred and fifty dollars. They have money in contractual expense to cover those, three thousand, seven hundred and seventy five dollars. Lastly, in the sewer fund, contractual expense for sewers running over. That's unusual. Uh, state hasn't always additional testing requirements that are expensive on our sludge and on our our, our samples of wastewater. Um, costs about three thousand dollars every time we do a round. And, uh, those are having to be done in order. So, um, we have bringing the health insurance premium line I have there to move over to thirteen thousand. So those are the, the transfers I'm requesting for one tonight's appropriations.
Any questions from the board on the budget transfers?
It continues to trend higher and higher and higher. The total costs are killing us.
It, it does. I was just noticing that too, that it seems like the power every month is going higher and higher and higher.
Yeah, I'm looking right now at seven thousand bucks.
Hmm. And the unfunded mandates by the state for the extra tech, extra testing. They want you, they need us, they require us to do these things, but they don't give you the money to do it with. And it's really getting out of control. But these are things that we have to do to do to be the village. Anybody else?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve all the transfers.
Takes the motion to approve the transfers. And Heather seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving along, I have a message here from the Granville Fire Department to Mayor Lobbis and the village trustees. The Granville Fire Department has held its annual elections on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty five and has voted Michael Zinn as the fire chief and Keith Sebood as assistant chief. I'm writing to request you to consider these appointments for the two thousand twenty five operating year. Uh, sincerely, it's signed by Secretary Matthew James. I need a motion to accept Mike Zinn as chief and Keith Sebood as assistant chief. Paul makes the motion and Dean seconds. And again, thank you guys, gentlemen, for your volunteer time. It's priceless. I have another statement here from, uh, the fire department. The Granville Engine Hose is accepted following member by a membership vote. We're asking to you, for you to approve him as a member of our company. You'll see the member's name and the date that they were voted into our company. If you could look over the name below and get back to us in writing. Um, they accepted was March eleventh, two thousand twenty five of, uh, Logan Martel. I need a motion from the board to accept Logan Martel's acceptance into the Granville Fire Department. Heather makes the motion. Denise seconds. All in favor? Aye. And again, thank you, Logan, for volunteering your time and your efforts. Our volunteers are fantastic and I can't say anything more about them. We have a member, a quick memorandum of agreement for the Granville C S E contract that we have settled out with the DPW. Uh, discussed this with the board last month. Um, we did go over this. Nothing majorly changes. Uh, the raises are in here. Um, I guess, I guess need Dean to sign this, correct?
Correct. Well, it's really the first time I really got a chance to, as we discussed last week, last month when Eric said we're, but I didn't see this other language with changing the work schedule, make it permanent under contract in five days, making use for tense.
That's what they wanted to do. That's what we discussed over there.
Trial basis in the past. I didn't get a chance to discuss it with them, but, uh, it just makes me remind me of the time when we did something like this with the police department. And already begged us and begged us not to take the contract away from them and schedule away from them, but we did and bit us in the can. That's my one thought on that. I mean, far as the rest of it, I mean, it looks pretty much standard. I mean, nothing too surprising, you know, picking up birth or hot birthday, even for a public holiday, I assume a big deal there. That's hard as yeah. The employees, we do that once a year with them anyways, so part of the holiday time.
The fourth in our workday seems to be working out pretty well. As far as we'd like to see Denise, you were good with that too.
And I'll, but once it gets started, I very much in favor of it. Do employees like it? They can get more done. Scott is very happy with it.
Seems to be working out well.
More efficient use of their time. So I'm very pleased with that. I have nothing to say.
Everybody else good with this vote on this? I need a motion. I'm just going to pass this, please.
I'll make a motion.
Paul makes the motion. Heather seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to we have to have our year end appropriations meeting this month. As the next meeting will be starting our new fiscal year. What is a good date for everybody to come in? It's going to be a very short one. Um, it won't take us long. And if possible, I'd like to do it at six o'clock. Is that okay for you, Heather? I know you've been working a lot overtime. Dean, is that okay for you with, kind of with your?
Hey, it all depends on what day we get this.
What day is good?
Probably a Thursday, once or Thursday.
I can do anytime.
Anytime, Tuesday for me.
Yeah. Thursday, the twenty second. Sound good to everybody? Six P M. Thursday, the twenty second at six P M. Uh, right here and we'll do that. Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to turn the floor over now to, uh, Mr. Nick Stark from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and Ms. Jackie Cassiano. Um, Vermont V Trans and Mr. Dwayne Daigle, the village representative for the Delaware Hudson Rail Trail Management Plan. Um, whoever wants to speak first, step up and let's hear what you got. How are you then?
Was not able to mediate. Uh, actually she has a sick child.
Okay.
Uh, I did print out a copy. It looks like we all got a copy of it. Um, yeah, so I'm Nick Stark. I work as a planner, uh, for the Rutland region, uh, in Grand City. And, um, I also live up in Bull, so a neighbor. Um, we put together the Delaware Hudson, uh, Rail Trail Council, um, a little over a year ago now and I got that's a great cohort of, uh, the folks here, uh, on it. And I'm coming in tonight just because I wanted to get some face to face time and say thank you for, uh, electing representatives to the council. Um, they've been fantastic. Um, uh, in aiding the efforts, uh, we've undertaken. Um, as you've seen in your, um, booklet, uh, the state of Vermont has been uh, putting new emphasis on its rail trail assets and develop a program under its Department of Transportation to oversee them as uh, multi-use corridors essentially. Um, and our first step in figuring out what we want to do with them is speaking with folks and getting an understanding of what issues and opportunities, uh, we currently are facing and then we can develop plans to kind of address those. Um, so the large thing that, uh, you know, we're hoping to, to get from you all on this side of the border is uh, continue to support through your reps. Um, and also, uh, for you all, if you can take some time to just check out the public input tool. I'm sure you all have experience and, you know, you all have been doing an amazing job with, uh, you know, developments, um, within the village, uh, to the trail. So I commend you for that. Um, but if there are elements that, you know, you see, um, you think would be helpful for the entire corridor to enact, um, now's the time for us to kind of come together and think about, all right, what are the next five years look like, you know, and, and how can we work together to, to achieve those things? Um, along with this meeting here at the, the village, I'm, uh, waiting on, um, Mr. Baker at the, at the town, let me know, um, which date exactly I'll be going and uh, giving them the same sort of, you know, intro and presentation, probably go a bit more in depth just because they don't have representatives on the council yet. Uh, but we'll be asking, uh, the, the lawyer might join as the town rep. Um, but we're hoping to get them to have a seat on the council as well so that, uh, we can revisit, you know, um, elements of, uh, how do we connect with Grandville, you know, i- if not through the historic corridor, through uh, alternative routes that were identified in the two thousand eighteen disability study. Um, recently we've had, uh, some really nice, uh, conversations with Allison Gaddy at the, uh, Lake, Lake George, Lake Champlain.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, um, we're really heartened with, uh, her commitment to, to working with us and, uh, we do believe that we'll be able to find some really nice, uh, opportunities and, and, uh, alternatives to, to, to look towards. I feel like I've said a lot. Um, any questions, uh, on, on your end of things?
Is there still a block right there between Poltony and Middle Granville?
I was just gonna ask you that.
Probably.
So that's one thing that we're, we're trying to suss out and I've been working on this for a good two years even prior to my, uh, starting at the regional planning commission. Um, getting to the ground truth has been a two-year process and I do believe I have a very comprehensive timeline going back to eighteen hundreds, thanks to these guys, uh, of the, the, uh, rail line and um, up through the court cases in the nineties. Um, that's all to say, we're hoping to get the right folks around the table to discuss have we exhausted all possibilities here, uh, with the landowner and, um, and then engaging, uh, with other landowners to find those alternative routes. Um, but that is still on the table is, you know, have we, you know, is there a price? Is there, uh, a gift basket? You know, what is the right avenue by which to approach this landowner and see whether that door truly still is closed? Um, cause that is an area that I'm still a little working on is how things went awry when that thirty fifty thousand dollars was, um, appropriated by the Economic Development, uh, Regional Board, I believe, um, to continue the trail and then I think parks backed off or something. So there, there's still for me a few uh, unknowns as to how that all transpired a few years ago. Um, but that's part of why we're hoping to get everybody around the table. Um, the ways that's going to happen are, um, one, again, we have this public input tool that we're asking folks to, you know, give us any of your thoughts. There's also a comment forum. Uh, if it's less of a geolocated issue. Um, and later in the summer, we're going to be hosting a, uh, a public event. Um, it'll most likely be at Castleton, um, Vermont State University, Castle campus, uh, so you can um, and there we're just going to have an open forum about the same topics. And hopefully suss out who are the key stakeholders that we want to invite to a slightly more tailored conversation around what we call the missing lake, um, and kind of make that connection. Um, so I don't have any great answers for you there, but it is something.
Can I go back, what, twenty five years to when it passed out?
Yeah. Um, yeah.
Least.
Yeah. Um, yeah. And something that I've been being about lots, you know, uh, you know, they've been what, nineteen eighty six or seven, I think, uh, the, the rail bed got ripped up and, uh,
Eighty eight.
The, the snowmobile crews, especially here in Granville, uh, are a huge proponent of, uh, you know, rail banking and, and, uh, saving the trail for multi-use, uh, for the portal for multi-use trail. Uh, so just want to give some good service to that thing.
So just going by yours as a Vermont agency, uh, of transportation. Um, are you working with like a New York state side of this? I know I had that trail kind of weaves in and out of the state of New York and back into Vermont. Um, so, uh, I'm assuming there's a combined effort of New York and Vermont state working on this together or?
Unfortunately, that's relatively basic, but Allison Gaddy has been the first person that we've been able to connect with and seen, you know, uh, some commitment to, to work on the issue together. Uh, we have had, um, in fits and starts conversations with, uh, the forest parks, um, New York State Forest Parks or the regional, um, as well as some other nonprofit groups, um, like some land trusts and, um, I, their names escaping me now, but some parks, uh, and other posts that are advocates for multi-use trail and that sort of thing. Um, but, uh, it's been the, I think, you know, they, even my conversations with Matt Hicks, uh, a few years ago. I think the the inability to connect it took the wind out of the sails. I have a lot of folks and I think we just have to pick ourselves up and, and see, see what we can try and, um, but I, I'm pinning a lot of my notes on, uh, the Lake George Lake Champlain, regional playing, uh, for, to, to be our sort of counterparts on the other side of the state. Um, if you all have any folks that you think would be aligned with, uh, you know, recognizing the potential impact of the trail, um, should it be connected? Um, do let me know. Um, and, uh, I'd be glad to, to get in touch with them and see if we can start a work.
But Allison Gaddy would be the one that we've been working with all along and
Yeah.
As you know, we've put in some other stuff that's like working on the trail. We've got our park development and everything else going down through there. So, um, with this R E R C grant money that's going to be coming through a full two, but, uh, no, I, I appreciate you just coming by and I haven't had a chance to look this in over yet, but I definitely will be checking it out.
Sure.
So you have not scheduled, uh, anything with the town yet?
Uh, no, it was whether or not it would fit us on the agenda for next month or the following month. So it'll happen, uh, it's just a question.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I do understand that, uh, you know, with, um, Mr. Hicks leaving, I think a lot of the, the initiative to work on the trail there left with him. Um, so I'm hopeful that, you know, uh, enough time has passed that they're maybe ready to pick up the the baton again, um, to that end. If you all have any, you know, interaction with that board, uh, it'd be great for you all to voice your support and and let them know that you, you know, elected a representative and that it's something, you know, it doesn't cost them anything, but helps everyone sort of understand, uh, what efforts are on your way and how it's coordinated.
So Dwayne, you still the rep for the town or?
Yeah.
Are you the rep for the, I thought you were the rep for the town too.
No, I'm in the village.
Oh, just to go. So I thought you were the town too.
Okay.
Who was the rep for the town, do you know?
Hey, we're the black guy.
Oh, okay. Did you have some funding in the budget? Enough money in the budget.
Yeah, I, I mentioned, uh, if you all ever, it's the second Wednesday of each month in Rutland City at our office and we have pizza for anybody who comes. So we'd love to have that. Uh, also, uh, a little aside, I commend you all for, uh, this is one of the best run municipal meetings I think I've, I've seen, uh, in my short tenure. It's truly impressive.
Thank you.
Have a village, uh, residence.
Thank you. It's a good feeling.
Yeah.
We have an excellent board. There's no doubt about it. We've got a great village and a great bunch of department heads that work with. So it makes things a lot smoother on my end. And e- especially when you have a great board to work with too. I like these cool pictures.
The village is better though. There's no question about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if you all thought we know of the new Adirondack Rail Trail, um, but that opened just last season and, um, it is, it's recorded something like ninety three thousand visitors, uh, and that's a sixty mile trail. So I, I do think there is a, uh, another level of off when we are able to connect and get those higher mileage numbers where folks can, you know, maybe not even just spend a whole day, but spend a weekend riding up the trail and then riding back and, and making a real weekend of it. Um, so I think, you know, we still have a lot of that potential, um, in the
Just seeing the amount that it's getting used now, I mean, uh, my business is, uh, crossing the rail trail, just as it goes back into the state of Vermont, the, I don't know if you know where the parking area is up off the Warren Switch Road, it's called just off Route twenty two. But you could go there, I mean, it's from six o'clock in the morning until dark and there's cars in that parking lot. I mean, using that trail and it's, you know, a lot of, a lot of people use it. What, uh, having their horse riding down through there too. I noticed on the weekends now, that's kind of a getting to be a popular thing, but it definitely does get used a lot. And I think it's a great idea, you know, for the expand on that just to I mean, I've seen a lot of them around. I I know a lot of these trails are paved. I don't know if I'm, I've never been a big supporter of that, but, uh,
I'm sorry, I was, but, uh, they, we just had a meeting, um, we had our first statewide rail trail council meeting where we met with other rail trail councils. And that was a conversation that came up amongst ourselves and, um, fellow named Tom Sexton, who's part of the Rails and Trails Conservancy, which is a national organization. And the, the numbers are terrible for, for paved. Um, they just, they degrade quickly. They cost a lot of money.
Yeah.
And the only folks that really benefit from it are cyclists.
Yeah, exactly.
Even now, the trend is crowd cycling. So there really isn't much to, to go down by. So I reach out to the Rails and Trails Conservancy.
I've never been a, been a fan of it. I mean, it's the cinder track that's there now basically from the coal cinders from the, the trains of years ago have packed down pretty, pretty darn tight now. And, uh, it's a pretty solid trailer, good base, so.
I mean, those, um, so I think there's another avenue where like we'd love to collaborate, right? Even things as minute as, uh, trail surface and, you know, what the breakdown of the sediment that we're using to pack it down. Um, those are the types of collaborations that we'd love to see so that, you know, when it is connected, there is a cohesive experience passing across state lines. Um, so, yeah, uh, if you all have any questions that we, please relate them to, to Dwayne you're doing. Um, and, uh, we'd love to, you know, again, like, uh, be able to chat about it at the council and come back to you with answers, uh, pretty, yeah.
The way I've always seen it is a cold, there are the, uh, the tracks have always been built up and raised anyway with the, um, ballots that they used to use, but always filled in with uh, the cinder tracks, which is the, or the cinders from the engines where they dumped their ash pans going through on a D N H buff and anything, anyway. Um, literally, if that's all they would have to do is I think grade those that entire trail down about three inches thick with a grader and you'd have a brand new cinder track all the way through from beginning to end.
It's an interesting, I'm going to have to bring that up with Jackie.
Take, take a core sample and drill it of the tack. Those, those cinders are about two and a half foot thick.
Yeah.
You could bring it down three inches and widen the trail and you'd have a cinder track trail done, just with a grader.
I think our own D P D A guy Danny mastered that. We brought in a paper and they filled it full of stone and put a beautiful thing. It's the most cleverst thing to do and easiest way to do it. You just kept sending that paper down through the stone and they just laid it in there nice.
Yeah.
What a trail.
Sure packed.
This is really, okay.
It's, it works good. Vermont did it too. Yeah.
Cause I know they did. It was a bit of a snappy, but they re-surfaced the trail in the Poltony area. And they had to do it twice because they ended up using crush slate and everybody was coming.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Yeah, so.
That's not good.
Yeah.
Any update on the grants that we put in for improvements on the trails?
I'll check Schumer. Don't draw his pen up. Anybody at the state?
Probably don't cut it out.
It's rusting on somebody's desk down there. So we're, our work is pretty much done on that. We're waiting for the signatures and it's we'll push it through.
Uh, lastly, it was one thing, uh, I'd let you all know, Rick is also a perfect partner in this. So it's one of the shout too.
He's the man.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, well, that's all I've got, you know, uh, feel free to reach out to me. Um, and please do use that public input tool and everybody, uh, use the hands of them. So, uh, we, you know, we really want to hear, uh, your, your, uh, your best idea of how to activate the, the trail. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, does anybody else want to say anything about that rail trail? Explain, anybody?
If, if the tree was here, nobody's paying taxes, I keep them all sold like they are now.
Yeah, on that section. It's a good point and it's been paid for. The state's been paying for those taxes for many, many, many years. It's a good point and it's been paid for. The state's been paying for those taxes for many, many, many years.
It's funny, we're actually, um, we'll, we'll see where it goes, but I'll verify also that. Um, and she. Had some questions as to whether those maps were updated. Um, so we'll see that, yeah.
Yeah, every year they update them.
Okay.
All right, right.
Yeah, they're up to date.
There we go, yeah. Yeah. Creation and section of the full line.
All right. Ever since they did take it over, they've been paying for that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I also talked to a. Couple of weekends ago, we had a conference of words on Bigfoot and. And B B W was there and they gave a speech on that and they said that any railroad in New York. That gets abandoned goes to New York State.
Mm-hmm.
So. It's just kind of. Like, you know, but I mean, that's about the line, you're gonna.
Yeah.
In my opinion is they should prove that the state don't own that. We shouldn't have to prove that the state owns it.
Mm-hmm.
We already know they do.
Yeah.
It's in their name.
That's it. Yeah, well, yeah, we can.
Thanks. Everybody, oh damn.
Yeah.
Parents and rec.
Yeah, I, I think that was a bit of what I understand why parts of rec backed off is that there was some. Uh, you know, a question asked of whether there was unity in, in the direction that they should go and. They sensed a little bit of hesitance and, and backed off. So. Um, the big idea behind the council is to, you know, sort of form that coalition so that when we go to the state, when we go to parts of rec. They see that there's not just, you know, a small group, but a region-wide consortium of folks that all are, are saying we want this, so.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else more on that, um, I am going to open the floor to public comments. If there's anything that anybody would like to say, please address the board. Do you have a total of five minutes? It's not a question and answer session. But if you need to speak your piece about something and address the board, now is your chance to do it. Is there anything that anybody would like to address the board or say to the board?
Don't address it.
Um, on behalf of my office, uh, we'd like to acknowledge and, and express our sympathies on the passing of the town clerk Jenny Nortel. I'm sure many of you are aware that she's passed on. Uh, but Jenny did a fine job as town clerk for over twenty-five years and. Uh, we worked with her closely on a lot of things. Uh, it's never easy to. Work with someone for that length of time. She's. Took care of Matt Hicks's supervisor, Karen A, and ours truly worked with her. So. Our sympathies uh to Jenny's family and also to the town. Thank you.
Of course, of course. Um, yep, you're very, very good, kind person to work with too. Um, anybody else like to say anything? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close public hearing. Um, I don't have anything. I do have one thing I've said to the session, now that I just thought of it very quickly. I need a motion to go to executive session to discuss some personal contracts.
Make the motion.
It won't be a long one, but I do need to put it in.